Hello.
I'm always in a panic because I have extra steps to actually log in every time. Doesn't matter what computer I'm using.
It's so funny Valerie, I was, you know, there's two links I must have that are on my calendar and each time I'm like loading both of them. And I started early, my husband's like, can you please start because I go into this, you know, make sure the wifi is okay.
I think that Zoom added some complexity to it. It wasn't always this way.
I think the webinar right is different and.
It is, there are a few extra steps there.
Can you all hear me? Because sometimes I have issues.
Yes.
Thank you. For members of the public, I'd just like to advise you that we're waiting for the arrival of one more member of the board before we commence the meeting. Okay, I believe we have all the members of our Board of Education meeting joining us. So I'd like to take this opportunity to call to order the Board of Education meeting for January 25th, 2021. Welcome everyone. Please note that Board President Lauren Berman isn't able to join us this evening. We are going to now begin our portion of the meeting, beginning with announcements from Dr. Henni Piedmont.
Vice President Rofeys and Board Trustees, just a few announcements to share with you first and foremost. Congratulations to the cast and crew of the middle school production of Annie. That was a really exceptional job, given the challenges that they face. So they pull those off with such stealth and excellence. So congratulations to everyone. I also would like to share an information that actually came through a NISBA email this afternoon announcing that the Board of Regents has petitioned the U.S. Department of Education to suggest that the testing program for elementary, middle and high school students does not take place this spring. I included a link that was in the NISBA email to our faculty and staff, which gives them an opportunity to respond to or email their own thoughts and concerns or suggestions about that. I'll also share that with the community and an email, I mean, sorry, an email in a part of the Hastings Daily, so that members of the community, if they wish, can also email that, you know, and share that information with the Board of Regents. I believe the Board of Regents will be making a decision very early or expecting to hear about a decision early on in February. The, this morning, in a conversation with our county executive George Latimer and other superintendents in the region, County Executive Latimer announced to us that he was going to be advocating for school people to obtain the vaccine who have not. A number of people either have not been able to get an appointment due to the shortage of the vaccine and the fact that, you know, school people were, you know, on the list under, you know, the group that was contained in 1B, the group called 1B, that it was, you know, really disappointing that so many people were still waiting just to get the first shot. So he's, he will be advocating for, for school people to be able to somehow, you know, be given some, some concession to allow them to get, you know, a vaccine sooner than later. So I now, I sent an email to everyone today, letting them know that. And I just needed to get some information from them with regards to whether or not they had actually already sought the first shot and weren't able to get it or their own, their first appointment had been canceled. So I'll be sharing that information. And then as soon as we hear, the idea is that perhaps, you know, at the county center, there will be some opportunities for school people across all the school districts in Westchester to be able to, to get that first shot sooner than later. We're working through a process through the athletic program. It's the athletic program for section one throughout the region. Then our governor announced that high risk, a certain high-risk athletics or athletic programs or athletic, you know, sports and events such as wrestling, you know, would be under the jurisdiction, for example, of the Westchester County Department of Health to make a decision about whether or not certain sports would be permitted in February. So that decision is not, you know, a decision that school districts will be making. It'll be a part of a collaboration that includes the Department of Health, Section One, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And I believe that our athletic director Drew Wendell did send some information out today to the community, basically letting you know that that process is underway and that we expect to hear a response towards the, you know, end of this week. With that said, just as a reminder, tomorrow is a remote instruction day. The decision was made due to the sort of uncertainty around when the ice and sleep would start tomorrow. That's in the forecast. And so that, you know, we didn't put anyone at risk who was traveling, you know, to the school district, to their respective buildings. The decision was made, which was, you know, decision made by a number of school districts in Westchester to go into remote instruction so that we didn't have to worry about making any cancellations or any calls or decisions early tomorrow morning or later on in the afternoon. So this was viewed to be the least disruptive decision to be made. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And if there, you know, if there's some additional information, that'll be shared tomorrow night and with regards to what happens on Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think that we're now ready to move on to the administrative comments. So if we could start with our, with Ms. Samansky.
Good evening, everyone. So first, I'd like to recognize and congratulate a number of Hastings students who were recently selected for Civics Unplugged fellowships. Congratulations Liam Shanley, Marin Dis, Bianca Arnon, Isabella DePriest Sullivan, Isabel Aiken, Kaylee Oppenheimer, Lee Herbstman, and Benjamin Sato Glick. As an additional bright spot, Hastings High School has actually had the largest number of accepted applicants among 500 participants worldwide. So congratulations and thank you to our future leaders. Thank you Board Trustee Doug Suntine for putting Civics Unplugged on our radar and this fellowship opportunity and to Greg Smith and the Social Studies Department for helping to promote interest amongst students.
Melissa, could you just explain what it is and what the fellow?
So Civics Unplugged is an organization that's committed to promoting democracy and it has worldwide opportunities where students can engage in learning together as, as a cohort and also determining specific projects that they're interested in working on. And so they have a built-in network. So not only is it an opportunity for them to be involved in a fellowship where they're learning alongside other students from around the world, but it's under the premise of being able to make a difference even as a student, to take action and to make change and to cultivate initiative and leadership. So we're very excited about this. And again, Doug Suntine brought it to the district and it was really amazing to be able to partner with the organization. We, we designed with them a private session that they could actually come and speak with the students. So former fellows came and our students actually, you know, whoever, whomever was interested, they were able to come and ask questions and have a personalized session. So I do think that part of the reason that we had such a strong pool is we took a very collaborative approach to making sure that as students started the quarter, the Social Studies Department was generating some interest and also keeping it student-centered in terms of being able to answer questions that they may have and cultivate some interest. So it was really great, certainly to be part of that process. I'm really proud of our students. I'm proud of our district and I haven't yet been able to determine if we are the largest cohort ever that they've had, but we are certainly the largest cohort worldwide this year. And, you know, our, our PR person, Jason Platsner, just did a brief article for the Hastings Daily and hopefully the enterprise will pick it up too. But it was great to see some of the quotes from the students and what they're interested in. So if you look at the recently released Hastings Daily, there's a feature on that too. You can hear right from the students, some of their words about what made them enthusiastic about wanting to participate. So looking forward to hearing more from them.
There's, there's actually, just to chime in, CBS Sunday Morning did, I think CBS it was, or ABC, I think it was CBS, did like a four-minute piece on them last year, earlier this year. One of the, and so that's, if you go to their website, you can see and it's really pretty compelling. But, you know, the kids actually run the organization. So some of the adults help kind of supervise and manage to, but not only are the kids chosen, like we've, like the eight students at Hastings have been chosen, but a lot of the older high schoolers or recent high school grads are actually helping to run the actual organization, which is pretty interesting as well.
Great. So certainly a bright spot for us, very exciting for our district and looking forward to hearing more from our students about some of the things they're experiencing through participating in the fellowship opportunity. Okay, so moving on to theater, just wanted to echo with, with Dr. Penning, Dr. Henni Piedmont said, so Annie Junior was released on Friday night. And if anyone's looking for the link, that can be found on our district website under announcements. So congratulations to all involved in the production. Athletics, so we do have a Hastings High School graduate, Ally Marpett, class of 2011, who's going to be playing in the Super Bowl as the starting left guard of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. So that's very exciting news. The culturally responsive sustaining education pedagogy's work. We're continuing to keep our focus there. I'd like to say thank you to the administrative teams at all three buildings who have been very instrumental in their partnership with me and with each other, with the design of faculty meetings to support learning that's anchored in the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. I'd also like to thank and recognize the EDC members, the elementary department coordinators at Hillside, who have also been directly involved in supporting their colleagues over at Hillside. Racial Equity Learning Day, that is coming up on Wednesday, the 27th. This day has been designed for members of the faculty and students to learn alongside each other. We have a series of speakers lined up and they include Dr. Dietrich Price Dennis, Yolanda Seeley Ruiz, and Kevin Richardson. And areas of focus for the day will include media equity and social change, archaeology of the self, and knowing and making use of your rights. So I'd like to thank the design committee for a strong collaboration. I'll be releasing that in my next newsletter. The committee seems to be growing and cascading as we continue planning for the day. So I'll make sure all of the names are on there. But we do have teachers, administrators, both at the building levels and at central office level, and a number of students. And we've had a parent participating as well. So that's been wonderful and we're looking forward to that experience. And then finally, the Curriculum Teaching and Learning Thought Group recently gathered for the January meeting. And the purpose of our session was to continue to establish the connection between what children are learning in school and what they need for life, for work, and the future of learning in an ever-changing world. We were fortunate to have one of our community members and who is also a professor at Columbia University, Tom Hatch, join us to facilitate a portion of the session. And under his guidance, the group was engaged in exploring what it takes to develop common purposes for learning. And that will ultimately feed into the work that Dr. Henni Piedmont is beginning with our district around Portrait of a Graduate, which she recently wrote about. So that is the update for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Samansky. If we have anything that we could hear from our business official, Ms. Caraballo?
Yes, I'm just, at this portion, I'll give an update on some state aid that we received this past week. Governor Cuomo released his executive budget proposal last week. And in that proposal, he laid out two different scenarios that would have a direct impact on, on how much schools are anticipating to receive this upcoming school year. The first scenario, New York State, was based upon expecting about $6 billion in additional funding from a future federal COVID relief package. And two, if there was a federal government were to allocate a potential allocation of $15 billion in funding, based on these scenarios, we will be working with those to start construction of our budget now that we have a better sense of what the state budget is, proposals are. If the state did release some aid runs that are available on their website and looking at that, I mean, it's a little confusing the way they're run this year because they're also include the STAR allocation, which is not monies that come directly to the school. In the, in those scenarios though, they did show what we would receive if the $6 billion in funding scenario were to be received by the state. In addition to those two scenarios, the, the budget proposal has numerous policy proposals, some of which have been in previous executive budget proposals and many of which school districts find to be unfavorable for us. In particular, there's some talk again this year, as it was last year, of a consolidation of some of the expense-based aids, particularly the BOSI's aid reimbursements and some other special education aids that they're looking to either to consolidate into an aid instead of being driven by expenditures. And although in the first year it wouldn't be problematic, it could limit growth in those areas when you're spending additional funds. And at this point, you know, what we're continuing to, you know, listen to, the governor will be updating us based upon what funds that they do receive. And then also with the COVID pandemic costs, there are some talks about, you know, some dollars being associated with allocating districts who have been harder hit this past year. So that, that's the state aid and there'll be plenty more discussion around that in the upcoming weeks as we begin our budget proposal talks. And then just on technology, we've spoken about this before, but the Go Guardian software that is going to be rolled down in the upcoming weeks. And, and the Go Guardian is a software that allows parents greater control over their children's internet use. We will be looking to put out some information on it, including some parental information sessions and an opt-in form for parents who are interested in having this software available for, to allow them some greater oversight of their children's usage of the school initiative profile. Many districts have been using this software successfully, including GovStare. So that will be some information should be coming out at the end of this week for parents regarding that. And, and then I'll provide a capital update later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. I see that Sabine is joining us this evening. And so if she could give a report back to us on the student updates, that would be wonderful.
Yes, hello, everyone. Not much going on for students right now in the middle of the winter, especially considering there is a global pandemic. So just a few things for tonight. There is a lot of anticipation and excitement surrounding Wednesday's Racial Equity Learning Day. Students are looking forward to hearing the perspectives of the guest speakers. This Friday marks the end up to the second quarter of the academic year. While overall morale among the student body is low, with numerous tests and projects being completed, the idea of a new semester is promising and hopeful. And for graduating seniors, the end of the second quarter signifies the beginning of their last semester of high school. Finally, the Student Union continues to have meetings discussing how to further benefit student life. Right now, the group of representatives mainly focuses on a potential new honor code. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've now reached the portion of our meeting dedicated to our first public comment. Our first public comment is open and related to items on this evening's board agenda. The public is reminded that your comments are limited to three minutes in duration. So please advise us if you're a resident of Hastings-on-Hudson and wait for our district clerk, Ms. De La Barera, to tell you it's your turn to share your comment. Thank you.
Could I just say one thing? Did we want the moment of silence that we talked about at some point?
Certainly.
So let me know when you want it. You can do that after public comments. We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any hands raised for public comment.
Okay Valerie, Dr. Henni Piedmont, if you would like to lead us in that moment of silence.
Sure. I want to thank both Ms. Berman and Ms. Rofeys for thinking about faculty and staff and who have lost family members. And this was a way, this, this moment of silence and the reading of their names is a way to acknowledge how much we feel for our faculty and staff, some of whom have lost family members, you know, to, not to, you know, not COVID-related, but certainly it's just as painful and, you know, tragic to, you know, to, you know, to lose both relatives and friends. And so we wanted to acknowledge, you know, the loss of various family members due to, as I said, COVID as well as other related reasons. I'll start with mentioning the name of the faculty staff member, the person, the deceased and their relation to the faculty staff member. The first is John Reese. He's our music educator at both Farragut and the high school. He lost his grandmother, Ruth Kelder. Aaron Rager, who's at Hillside, lost her sister Christina Contardo. Joe Epstein, who's a teacher, a special educator at Farragut, lost his uncle Alan Miller. Nate Morgan, teacher, our teacher at Hillside, lost a good friend, Patrick. Nick Macri, he's our deputy treasurer and our chief information officer. Nick Macri, he's our deputy treasurer and our chief information officer in the business office, lost his mom. Fanny Macri. Maria Kukuchi, who's in our counseling office at the high school, lost her dear friend Joseph Appi. John DeCamps, assistant principal at Hillside, lost his father-in-law Frank Ruggiero. Maria Gunther, teacher at Hillside, lost a dear friend at Dodi. Michelle Gentile, kindergarten aide at Hillside, lost her mother-in-law Julia Marie Gentile. Maria Garcia, custodian at Farragut Middle School, lost her brother. Miguel Ignacio Garcia and Miguel Angel Garcia, her nephew. Trina Weltman, high school math department teacher, lost her father Herbert Sobel. And I lost my step-sister Sandra McDougall. And obviously, if we missed anyone, we didn't do it on purpose. We, and certainly. To the community as well, I'm sure their faculty, I'm sure that their family members and good friends that were lost and. Please feel free to share that information with us so that we can also honor the loss of those loved ones and family members with a moment of silence. So. We'll have a moment of silence in recognition and I'm sorry, I did not mention, I believe I missed. Mister. Two other people, I'm sorry. Melissa Dela Barrera, our district clerk and secretary to Melissa Semensky, lost her father Jose Dela Barrera. And Caroline, I think it's Antonicio, a social studies teacher, high, social studies teacher at the high school, lost both of her aunts. Amalia Fernandez and Milia Malari. So we could have a moment of silence at this time to honor these lost loved ones. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Henning Piedmont. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly. Extend our condolences and can only imagine the severe grief that has been experienced by so many members of our extended community. And we appreciate the commitment that you show by being a part of our district family. Thank you very much. In a return to our board agenda, we'll now be moving along to the business portion of our meeting. Do we have any questions related to business items, one through 10 listed in part 3A of our agenda?
Do, do we want to, or Maureen, do you want to explain any of these contracts?
I'm sure I can do that now. So, so tonight, the board is being asked to. There's five separate contracts, all of which are related to the Hillside project. As required under New York State Wicks law, they're broken down into the areas of general contracting, civil HVAC, plumbing and electric. Each bid that is being brought, recommended this evening. Came through a process as required by law. If the lowest responsible bidder on each project is being recommended, award of the contract. Each of these individual contractors went through a vetting process and an interview process. In order to be recommended to to be awarded the project this evening. In terms of the Hillside project, I can just, instead of providing an update later, I'll do it here. These, these awards tonight represent a total of $8,350,000. About a few months ago when we were doing updates on the overall budget. We, this brings us below where we had hoped to open up these contracts and award these contracts at. In the contracts, the only, there were some alternates that we have. Are reflected in the recommendations. One that I want to point out in particular is the use of green concrete and constructing. Both the, some of the outside, outside of the building, immediately outside of the building as well as the concrete that'll be used to construct the addition. This recommendation was something that we were asked to. Consider by the village as that is a big, that is a something that they are. As part of their sustainability initiative in Hastings, they have been requesting or requiring. New buildings to be constructed with green concrete. And although we would not be held to their mandate. We were happy that we were able to award that kind, that alternate in this recommendation this evening. The work for this project, after the awards this evening, we will be then making, sending a letter to each contractors. With the, which will then allow them to secure. Finalize their insurance requirements and we are looking to have them mobilize. Starting the Saturday that begins our February break and start work at Hillside during that week. So it was very, was that kind of, I just wanted to give you kind of a general overview of what we're.
Yeah, no, that was helpful. I just wanted to. At least have some explanation before we raised our hand on $8 million in contracts.
No, that that's great, Jeremy. I was thinking of doing it later, but I think you're right. I think it was good to, so everyone knows that what is being. Recommended to the board does reflect the lowest bids and I just, I'll also mention here that. For our general contractors, we had 14 eligible bidders on that project. And again, the person here that's being recommended is the lowest. We had nine contractors for the civil, 11 for HVAC and six for each plumbing and electric. So. We had a lot of interest in this project and we had some very strong contractors that bid on our project. So we're. Happy to make the recommendations that we are tonight to the board.
Maureen, are you able to just give us a top line of where you were hoping to come in and the the delta?
Sure. The number that we had. That we did not want to go above was $8.8 million. And again, that was putting us. In our original bond budget of $18,300,000 because as as reported at an earlier board meeting. Some of the work that either is underway or has been completed, some, some of those projects came in lower, some came a little bit higher. So. When we looked at the overall dollar amount in the bond, we felt for this project that it was extremely important not to exceed $8.8 million. So coming in at $8.3 million, 50, we're very happy. We believe that also allows. Again, with thinking about that overall scope, overall total amount in the bond. If there is any unforeseen conditions, we feel very comfortable that that awarding the contracts this evening. And in in those contracts, there actually is some contingency. So there's each contract. The total of those contracts does allow us to have about $125,000 of unforeseen conditions baked in that $8.3 million, but we feel. We were very happy with the results and we felt we did very well because again, the the numbers we received were very favorable. So. You know, we're, it positions us in a good place to be in this project and also know that we do have some monies available for unforeseen. Or additional expense that may, you know, be incurred over the next. You know, over the next year with this project.
Is it something that would be helpful for me personally, maybe other board members is just whether it's every four weeks or eight weeks or, you know. Whatever is the appropriate timeframe, maybe within a couple of months, just to provide a tracker of kind of where where we are. That I think that could be helpful just to keep our top line. And just see where we're finding efficiencies and where there may be some overages at a high level. That would be great.
Absolutely. Yes, once we get into this, this type of project, these larger scale projects, we, along with the construction manager, will be coming. To different board meetings to provide updates again in both budget as well as. You know, how far along we're getting in the construction project itself. So we'll be providing pictures and updates as well over the next few months.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
I wanted to just comment on the next part in the business section about. The science professional learning that Ms. Mansky secured with a grant from the Edith Winthrop Teacher Center. And I was wondering if you could just talk a little about it for people who are listening, what the science department will be doing.
Sure. So this was actually work that was started last year. And then was interrupted by the onset of the pandemic. And so the work that's happening. Across the system is to really strengthen alignment. There have been some pretty significant shifts. Really that have necessitated, just thinking about how we're teaching different things and where we're teaching different things. And there are disciplinary core ideas in the areas of science that are, and also some cross-cutting concepts that go across different content areas. And so Helen Paschley is very well-known throughout the region. She's also. Very deeply connected at the state level and very keyed into shifts that are coming programmatically from the state around curriculum and shifts to the assessment program. So that work is really the continuation of a multi-year process to really strengthen our alignment. And we started it last year and Melissa Shandroff has been heavily involved. So we want to mirror the process that we began last year, which is that the administrative team and Melissa meet and we think about planning. What we did do where we left off with the work with Helen last year. Is that teams recommended, you know, based on their meeting time with her and based on the work that they had been doing. And their depth, their deeper dive into the standards, they actually did a bit of a self-assessment. And so it will be differentiated in terms of the work with her based on where each team is and what's needed. So we're excited about this. Helen was extremely well-received overall. She is a wealth of knowledge. She's incredibly brilliant and truly enjoyable to work with. So. We wanted to make sure that we were timing it correctly. I think kicking off this school year and just adjusting to the new conditions and the new remote learning plan and. All of the reentry, there's a lot going on. So we did. Progress very thoughtfully and the work does need to continue. And so Melissa is currently now in the process of engaging with teams. Specifically around the logistics of when this is taking place for each of them. And we're thinking about what's on the plate, you know, with the department. So that's where we are with that and certainly excited to be working with her again.
That's terrific. Thank you for bringing that to us. And I see it's nine, nine days of workshops. So that's, that's really terrific.
That's right. And there's, there's a lot of work to be done, actually, you know, given the K-12 scope of this. So it's great.
Are there any further questions regarding business items in part 3 of our agenda? Do I have a motion to approve business items one through 10 listed in part 3A of our agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Do we have any questions related to placement and services for CSC and CPSC recommended in part 3B of our agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the placement and services for CSC and CPSC recommended in part 3B of our agenda? And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is carried. We've now arrived at the personnel portion of our meeting. Do we have any questions related to appointments one through seven listed in part 4A of our agenda? Do I have a motion to approve appointments one through seven listed in part 4A of our agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Do we have any questions related to retirements one and two listed in part 4B of our agenda?
I don't have a question, but I did want to acknowledge that these are two teachers who've been with the district for. Well, one for three decades and one just under three decades. And that's an awful lot of time to dedicate to our community and. I really wanted to thank them for that. I know it's, it's so strange to be a, you know, so immersed and then just suddenly gone and I'm, we're gonna miss them and. I, I'm sure it's, it's gonna be a little bit of an adjustment for them too, but thank you so much for your years of of service. To our, to our kids and our families. I've heard a lot of wonderful things about both of you.
Thank you, Alison. I echo your words and as you were talking, what it made me think about is. Think about how many kids and families they've had an impact on. It's really. Quite a, quite powerful to think about and. I don't know if they're watching or they'll see this, but I also want to thank them so much. For their service. I know David Felbermount taught both of my kids in different grades. Thank you both.
All right, if there are no further comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve retirements? One and two listed in fart, part 4B of our agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Do we have any questions related to the resignation listed in part 4C of our agenda?
I just want to add that she has been, Dawn has been an incredible member of our nursing team and. Her position, as you know, in our district was temporary. And she, the only reason she's leaving is because she's getting, she has an opportunity for a full-time position. But I do want to acknowledge her, her work and her commitment to, you know, supporting the children, faculty and staff of our school district in the Farragut complex.
Thank you, Dr. Henning Piedmont. Do I have a motion to approve the resignation listed in part 4C of our agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Do we have any questions related to amendments one through three listed in part 4D of our agenda?
We're just happy to have Robin back. She's an incredible educator and member of the high school faculty as an English teacher and a special educator.
If there's no further comment, do I have a motion to approve amendments listed in part 4D of our agenda?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Do we have any questions related to? Do we have any questions related to the leave of absent listed in part 4E of our agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the leave of absent listed in part 4E of our agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is carried. We've now reached section five of our agenda, the minutes portion of our meeting. Do we have any questions related to approval of our minutes for our board meeting on January 11th, 2021? Do I have a motion to approve our minutes for our board meeting on January 11th, 2021?
Removed.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it and the motion is carried. We're now at the portion of our agenda dedicated to older business. So Ms. Caraballo, if you could share the update with us?
Sure. So I gave the majority of my update during the time when we were talking about the contracts. It really was just to let the board know about, once the contracts are approved and in terms of the timeframe and the commencement of the work, which I had mentioned earlier, is planned to proceed on the Saturday prior to the beginning of the February break. Just so the public knows and will be, you know, making sure that our neighbors, as we always do, communicate with those who are living around the area, that that work will begin and the work schedule will be Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we're beginning to have meetings with the building administration, again, just to make sure that we are all aligned in the schedule and all the contractors that have been awarded this work, it's, they're accustomed, they all work in, or schools are just, many of them are completing, wrapping up jobs at neighboring school districts. So this is something they're very much accustomed to working during times when school is in session. So we, we're kind of, now that we have the contracts moving forward tonight, that'll be our next steps. After that, as I had mentioned, I think at an earlier board meeting, we actually just received the 60% estimate for our auditorium work. So at the upcoming board meeting, we'll be presenting the, the designs that we're, we're looking to submit to the state. So, so that's kind of where we are in our, our capital project. So we're very, very happy that we can finally begin with the Hillside edition work and look forward to, you know, sharing some photos and along the way to kind of show the progress of that work in the upcoming month. So that, that's just the major of the update on that.
So thank you, Maureen and Joe, for all of your work in, you know, staying the course with all the details. There are so many various details, you know, as I listen to those meetings with, you know, the owners and architects, you know, work through and Neil and Joe, you know, are just so diligent and committed to making sure that the intentions of the project are in service to the community and the taxpayers are, you know, always at center in front and trying to make sure that everything that can be done to ensure the integrity of the initial, you know, the scope of the project is maintained and most importantly, that the taxpayers' investment, you know, is well managed. So thank you so much for your, all of your time and effort and energy, both you and Joe.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you. It's better, it's a real team effort and, and we're very excited to, to kind of finally get to the point where we are. So thank you for, for your words.
All right. With that, we've now received, we have, we've now arrived at the sub second public comment. Members of the public will be reminded that comments are limited to two minutes in duration at this portion of the meeting. I'm going to promote Jan Malillo. She had asked to speak. Jan, you need to unmute yourself?
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. I wasn't expecting to put my video on. Maybe I should turn that off again. Sorry. Been sitting on my couch for a while, just waiting. So I just wanted to comment, I know that Valerie was talking about the county executives offer to try to find doses of vaccine for teachers. I had an appointment on Wednesday at the health clinic in Peak Scale and was informed that that appointment is canceled. That would have been my first dose. I know of several other people who had first dose appointments or second dose appointments, and they are out of vaccine. So that's of course exceedingly disappointing, to say the least. I think, you know, obviously I was looking forward to kind of a relieved level of anxiety, knowing that I at least had half coverage and then a month from now would have some immunity, although my family would still be somewhat at risk because I could still carry it home. So of course, would appreciate, I, I hope that the county executive can deliver on that help and that that is not, you know, creating false hope. But just so you know, that's the situation that many teachers will now find themselves in. And there are, to my knowledge at this point, no appointments to reschedule to anywhere near the near future. Seems like weeks or months out. And then the other thing is, I just wanted to ask some questions, a question and just about the sharing of information about COVID cases and situations in different buildings. So as a teacher in the high school, for personal and professional reasons, but mostly professional reasons, you know, I, I would like to know a little bit more quickly sometimes when there are situations involving positive cases or closures or going full remote, not closures, going full remote. Today I had a situation where I was awaiting a specialist in the classroom that serves a student that I also work with. And there was a situation in the middle school that was keeping her from coming. I didn't, I didn't know why that was until she should, she could get to, you know, computer to email us that she wouldn't be coming and why. And of course, I'm not always monitoring my email either. I know that there are certain districts, you know, some districts have community updates and there's information put on their Facebook page, whatever, no matter what building or when there's a case in another building that perhaps the high school or other staff in the other buildings is CC'd, that that situation is occurring or that they're, these, you know, they're quarantines. So right now, unless I'm missing something, and of course, that's entirely possible, it's difficult to get that information. And I prefer as someone, a professional working in the district, that, that I have information before, say, a student is telling me, you know, what's going down somewhere or a parent is telling me what's, what's going on that I'm unaware of. And so I was just wondering if we might be able to use some of these strategies that other districts are using, text, texted community updates, updates on Facebook, emails, out, CC'd, et cetera. I'm sure you all know what those options might be.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
It doesn't appear like we have any other comments or anybody else with their hand raised. With that being the case, that we don't have any further requests for, to make public comments, we've now reached the portion of our agenda dedicated to BOE comments. So I'd like to open it up to my fellow colleagues to see whether or not there's anything they would like to weigh in on or share. All right. With that being the case, then we've reached the adjournment portion of our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting for January 25th, 2021? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion is carried and we'll look forward to seeing you out at our next board meeting in February. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.